Yes.
You gotta come back, get ready for your seats there.
No, I'm done.
I hate them.
Well, I got out at the end of twenty twenty.
Oh, no.
Yeah, that was my first step in retirement.
Oh, okay.
You know, the lot of months left in this, and then I'll. Then I'll be supporting it better.
Freedom, rather.
We're starting.
I had a written. Good.
Perfect. It is eight o'clock. Can we stand for pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there any public discussion?
One thousand thousand FEMA funds for drainage projects. Do you know what projects they've been doing?
Um, I would have to visit with Leon for sure, but I believe that was, I think, a decent chunk of that was for four lad eleven, open ditch. I'm not sure about all of it.
Was that all one chunk then? Or was it in smaller?
It wa- it was under one project, but that doesn't mean it's limited to one specific area. When we did the project or when FEMA broke out the projects in eighteen and nineteen, when they did those disasters, they were not grouped very well. So there's stuff from different areas of the county in the same project. So it's kind of confusing that way.
Basically, money go back, they could get the group and get charts. Uh, engineering teams on that project, I've asked for. My guy, you guys on record saying they destroyed the records. What's going on there on DD four eleven?
Not sure what you're talking about on destroying records, but there's.
I got, I got a report of you and Amber saying why it couldn't handle those records. And the reason was that Roger said they were destroyed.
That's news to me.
And I think that's been sharing costs for years. Never got a thing from you guys.
I, I can't speak to every specific record you've got, but I know you've gotten a lot of records from this courthouse. So. I, I don't know if you're looking for something specific, but.
DD four eleven. Question, it wasn't to Dan, she wasn't here. It was Amber and you and. And your yards.
At that time, it would not have even been my district, so I don't think I would have been involved at any point, but.
DD four eleven.
Barely, but Roger is handling. The ditch does not. It only goes in about quarter of a mile at the old districts. So. But, yeah, there was, there are funds returned for projects that were not completed, but um. That was, that was stuff that we were paid for upfront that was not done.
But you never talked to anybody during, because people would have called me. Asked about that, to return those funds. I'm on that district and he said, you're right, I'm worried that you talk to the patrons and they just want to spend money. I'm not that stupid to let money go back. But you only have to pay fifteen cents on the dollar on the repair. And that's you guys' responsibility.
He, he may have been talking about during seven on that, and I know there's, there's another project I got asked about for. Um. A total of over two hundred thousand that I don't know if the work is done on that, but Roger said he would. Leon had sent an email, Roger said he would get the stuff put together for that here the other day. So we'll have to get records put together for that, for the payment request, but um. I don't, I don't know the status of those projects, but that's a different chunk of money. There's, there's a lot of money that was available through the FEMA projects. But that's the best I can answer your question off the top of my head, so. If you want more specifics, I'll have to dig into it. In more detail, but. I'll have to work with Leon on that and figure out which project that was under. Anything else for public discussion? Seeing nothing else, do we have a uh motion for the agenda to approve the agenda in minutes or any changes?
Make the motion to approve the agenda. Okay.
In the minutes.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Motion second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry unanimous. Third direction. Next up would be review, review and approval claims. Is there any discussion, question on the claims? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Looks like we got some transfers. In our packet, anyone getting questions on those? General basic to secondary road and real basic to secondary road. Uh, we will acknowledge the transfers. We have discussion, decision, support on state auditor's bill relating to. An act relating to the penalty for public employees and public officials taking money from a public employer. By the state auditor. Joe is listed on this.
Yeah, all he wants to change the laws that when the penalty phase comes by the judge, the judge can't wait. Uh, the incarceration of the public official for taking ten thousand. I think being the auditor gave you guys a. Apple pie of reward or something or you, you guys don't favor. This would help do that, fill out the ground.
This bill is currently on the floor.
We're trying to get it off, and I don't think it, the last I knew it did not have any sense until it helps them, but.
Oh.
It's supposed to be the fourth one that will probably get picked out.
Those from twenty twenty um.
Suggestions for you guys or advice either way, so.
Well, I guess, open for any discussion, but if it's not, not currently on the floor, I would be surprised if it actually.
Happens instead.
Gets any traction, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot going on right now, but. I think it's gonna need a little bit more attention than this, so.
It's, it's currently in the judiciary committee, yeah?
I know the bill, uh, they're. Yeah, they're looking at it, but it would help them, you guys support it. I don't know why anybody would want support. You know, and I, I'd be glad to get that down there to the legislature that's listed on that uh topic. You know, if I got to say.
Are these, are these even the current committee assignments?
Yes.
They are?
From my, you can see on the website.
I think so, it's.
Okay. I haven't checked.
I know, I know the senators are at least right.
I don't know.
You guys supporting stuff before. You know, it's gonna be a saying.
I, I don't know that we've written letters like this, not in my last four years. Jack, do you remember ever doing a letter like this?
To the.
Legislature.
Just like.
Well, we've done some supporters, some things haven't we?
We've done like proclamations for days or whatever, but I don't think we've supported a bill in this regard. I've always had conversations with, with legislators over the phone or in person or whatever, but. I don't think we've ever done anything like this.
That's looking at this to see.
No, he's not. He, he wasn't going to be able to be here and he.
Well, no, I said that if he's going to look at, he's, he's gonna look at it, oh, no.
We can have, he didn't have any direction for either way.
I mean, without.
States, states would not, I don't know why we need to get involved. It's a state. It's like the state coming down here trying to tell us what, you know, like what states takes or knows of our affairs either, I don't like that. I don't see a reason to.
I guess they have a lot to discuss this session, and if it is important to them enough, it'll get out of committee. And if it's important to us enough at that time, like then maybe we can revisit that.
Revisit it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I doubt it, so you can't see if they're gonna make it to the board this year, but they've had everything through, yeah, done for this year, and that happens right off.
It's not, it's not done, but if it's not in the works, it's probably not.
It's, it's hard to get stuff surfaced again.
Yeah.
See, but it's in, darners any steam, but we can. Twice, we want to support it later again, but.
Would you want to table it or what would you?
Well, I was just saying, no action taken on it. I mean, it's just something we can come back to later, table it. Just say, no action taken, never. Don't talk about it. Go back to the gym later, we can't, but.
Yeah, it's not something that we would need to necessarily make a decision as a board, but I mean, independently, we could support it and. Um, you know, and those watching can get information on it, and if they want to contact their, you know, representatives and let them know that they support it as well. Um, I think it's more just kind of informational at this point, because, yeah, it's probably not gonna make it to the floor, so. But we should just, but no decision.
But thanks. Well, it's not allowed to get up to the floor. Yeah, why?
I, I would, I would not.
Post to the bill at all.
No, no, it's just.
Then you can show support, yeah.
We can show support, but I don't think it necessarily needs to be a board decision to show support. It's more of a, on an individual basis that you need to contact your, you know, representatives and let them know that you support it as a constituent. But us making a decision on it really isn't.
Most of our lobbying people in that respect, ISAC thing does that vote stand? I don't know if ISAC is.
This is not on their radar at all.
No.
We, we had to work pretty hard to get a topic for ju- juvenile detention.
ISAC is, ISAC has something that they're, that they're lobbying for them both, we show support for that. Just to pull the individual bill out of their own, I don't.
And those guys get so many letters and so many emails from so many entities, and another letter isn't gonna.
Yeah.
Change your mind. I mean, more effective would be just us calling or you calling or, you know, Senator Riley or President Stone or whoever.
Yeah.
To discuss that. I, that's what I would say.
If you saw a great, great case, if you ever called and got it back and. Said you supported, I'll, yeah, so what's that, that would you want to support? The way it was to me, and I don't know why you go, well, I said, ISAC reviews all those bills, ISAC is our entity for.
Well, and it's, it's not even a bill right now, so that's.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's a proposal for.
We'll look at it again.
Three years ago.
There's a. If, if there's an actual bill on the board.
But we can talk to. Ask ISAC, I guess, about it soon, maybe.
Yeah.
They give it, give us any information on it.
Well, you're right, in the minutes, no action taken, it sounds like the consensus of the board.
Thanks for bringing it, so.
Yep, thank you.
Um, for GPS, I did some research on that, got prices. There's a difference if we install it or if they install it. Um, if we install it, I was told seventeen forty-five per month, and that's with a twelve month contract. If they install it, it's eighteen ninety-five, so a dollar fifty a month for the install, basically. The contact info.
Let's go ahead.
Oh, the contact info I got was to call us Derek from Doug, and he's not our representative anymore. There's a Duncan, so I have his name and number as well, but. I get back again. That's the same stuff we have with the uh engineers department. It's through Verizon. So it's shy of twenty bucks a month.
So this, this would essentially add it to. The ambulances to allow Phil more access to information and then just to the county owned vehicles.
Yeah, all county owned.
This, this discussion, this is VBS on all county vehicles.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Be including, well, the assessor's car.
Yep.
Um.
So for that, I mean.
Custodians, HR has a vehicle. I don't know outside of that.
If you figure twenty, twenty times twelve, that's two hundred and forty bucks, so I mean, for one vehicle. Two hundred bucks, it's not gonna, not gonna add up to that much.
That would be each department six times within their budget.
Right now, that is how it is through Doug's, so, I mean. We could, we could run it all through the supervisor's budget if you wanted, but I don't, I don't know that it makes much difference. I mean.
Ours would have to be in a separate.
There's. Yeah, your, yours would be separate, but we're talking the rest of public.
See, actual equipment costs, purchase everything.
The equipment is included with the subscription.
You get the, you get the devices free with the.
With the subscription.
With a subscription, I think it's the deal.
Yeah, and then it's like a small installation fee, just like when you get your cell phone.
For.
You can get a free cell phone, but you gotta pay for that initial setup fee and then monthly after that, so.
For, for eighteen bucks a month, I don't think we can even begin to talk about installing ourselves.
So you won't actually own the equipment? They give you the equipment, but I didn't use their service.
Yeah. It's all, it's all platformed that way.
And this was something that EMS was looking to do, or they were wanting us to.
They're, yeah, they're interested in it because the system they're using right now is very good for Phil to kind of.
Yeah, and Phil had, Phil had called me on my way down this morning and asked if I could let him know when we were getting close to this, and I texted him. He said he was at Kemna's, so he'd be over shortly, so I don't know how soon he'll be here, but, yeah, he was.
Do we wanna? Do we wanna wait?
Come back to this one, Phil, that way Phil can come in and speak to it, or?
If you want, I mean, we could, otherwise.
He already, he already figured how we stood on.
Yeah, yeah.
He was hoping we would move forward on it.
I mean, it's already on the secondary road vehicles, it just makes sense to have a universal.
Yeah.
And everyone else who has a vehicle has been in here too during that discussion, I think.
Yeah, I think, I think the sheriff's office would be the.
Well, including, including the sheriff's office, yeah.
Do you know how many vehicles roughly? This would be four.
With the ambulances, I'd say probably a dozen total. That'd be. Trudy would have one, custodians, sanitarian. HR. Bill and Chris, they each have one, so that'd be six. Plus maybe six ambulances, so, yeah, probably ballpark a dozen.
Is it necessary, and the other vehicles outside the ambulance department departments want to have this installed, or should just? Find a possibility.
It's more of a. A why not kind of thing, because there, there is some benefits to having it. Um, for instance, if there was an emergency, you know, they're out visiting someone and something happened and they couldn't get out. You know, we at least have a location on them kind of thing. Um, also, if for some reason someone decides to take one of our county vehicles for a joyride. We can track it that way too, um.
There, there's lots of ways the system could be used, but at the end of the day, I think my purpose for putting it on the agenda originally was so that it's uniform, we don't have just one department or one individual that's singled out, so to speak, in that regard. And for the price tag of it, I think it's well worth it, I mean. Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, yeah, if it's your job, you know, it's the assessor's car, you're going out driving around doing assessments, it's not like somebody's watching you.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's just for. Situations as needed to be universal across the county.
Yeah.
And you'd be watched within your own department, too.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yo. Department heads would have access to it.
Right.
And, I mean, we discussed a little bit last week, but I think supervisors should not be restricted from that information, bare minimum, so. That, I don't know if that's something we need to include in the motion. It sounded like it from the conversation previously, but.
I don't know if that would be included in this motion. You know, as far as access or not, it's more of a decision on whether to purchase and have them installed.
Yeah, and it was, it was just part of the conversation that came up the last time, but.
I do think we need a little bit more information on um how it's gonna work into the budgets and things like that before we move on.
Well, we can, we can, we have numbers and we kind of have to make a decision so that we can put numbers in the budget, so. It's kind of the op, I would say it's the opposite of that. We need to, we need to make a decision so that we can move forward. I would say.
See, with Bill and one on the ambulance, and so he knows exactly where they're at.
And, and Phil's budget would be impacted the most because more units, the rest would all be.
Cause he had eight or twelve.
Seven at least, yeah.
Him and Chris on six ambulances.
They're separate.
Oh, they're separate, that's great.
So, yeah, seven at least. But, yeah, I mean, that would, that would impact his more than anyone else, so.
And if he's wanting it, that's, he knows what the cost is.
Yep.
It was, and I think this body employees, and they're speed, they're, they're not where they're supposed to be. Saying I'll forget a warning.
A lot of businesses do that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's.
Can even monitor maintenance.
I think it's getting more common as a whole, just.
Well.
Businesses, individuals, the whole thing, yards, it's, it's more of a common thing now here, so.
Part of tracking your assets, I mean. You put money into those vehicles and, you know.
It's cheap oversight as far as.
Right, right, so, I mean. Hey, there's Phil.
We were just talking about you for the last half hour. No. Um, we were talking about the GPS and I don't know if I told you the prices I got on the phone this morning or not, but it was seventeen forty-five. If we install or eighteen ninety-five if they installed professionally for a twelve month contract, so less than twenty bucks a month. Per unit, so.
Per unit.
Yeah, so we were talking about that and um. Leaning toward making a decision so that we can move forward with including that in the budget and all sorts of things that way, so. Do you have anything you want to say, or? I guess you missed the discussion we already had, but.
I've been trying to research this, find something for the ambulances for a while anyway. Apparently, we're using an app, and our app isn't sufficient for what we need to do. So we've been looking for something different.
Yeah.
With our vehicles, being the ambulances.
Well, I would make the. Motion to. To uh. Have them install. GPS systems on all county vehicles excluding the sheriff's department.
Okay, now a motion on the floor for. All county vehicles except sheriff's office, they're second.
I'll second.
Got that all written down, your team? Um. All those in favor?
One point of discussion, actually, quick. Being it says all county vehicles, is it necessary that we need to define what the vehicle is, because that was brought up? Cause, for example, not every quote vehicle. Has it, you know, with the road department.
Right, considering they have their, they have them in their um landlords. I mean, we're not talking, we're gonna put them in to.
Yeah, I.
You don't need GPS on the loader at the transportation, you know?
Yeah. So. Well, that, yeah, that probably doesn't happen.
Are you gonna include the KTVs that emergency management has?
I think we should.
Probably should, yeah.
Know what provider we're gonna be.
Verizon, same as, same as secondary road.
All of them have one portal, everything.
Uniform platform. Um.
Would that be necessary to, to figure out before making a decision?
So, I mean.
No, which, which vehicles classified with all county vehicles, such, not doing it to vehicles that aren't. Necessary, or what classified as a vehicle, I guess.
They move license plate on.
That would.
That would, that.
That would be a common sense approach.
All licensed, all licensed vehicles.
Yeah.
So now the ATV is on.
Those would have licenses.
Well, yeah, those would be licenses, because they're over the road.
They should.
Play on.
They should have registration and stuff.
Registration, but I. Wait, ready, still the registry correction.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, well, then we should make that, instead of license, we could do registered. Registered.
Registered.
Yeah.
All registered.
They're all registered. Even if trailer is registered.
So this is not a view.
I know trailer's not a vehicle.
All licensed vehicles excluding ATV. Do you guys talk about who has access to that portal and?
Department heads, um. And then.
Superbowl teams. Lockdown to. Lockdown to, like Judy has access to her vehicle, only?
Yep. All licensed vehicles on.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion?
No. So are we excluding the ATVs?
I think it should be included.
I think it should be too.
I don't, I don't see.
Put an ATV in.
And then, how do you want that portal managed? We're gonna have one account for Verizon, where you put all that equipment in it? If you wanna get a bill for each department to have that, do you want it? You know, there's some other operational questions there.
We could, we'll probably have to work out some fine details with that, but I don't know that you can include all that in a motion. I mean.
I just.
Yeah.
Concerns there, I don't know if you wanna handle that, how we do the individualizing of the portal pretty sure.
Yeah, I think that's fine tuned administration of it.
Best access to that, that should be defined as well, I think at your level. They come up, it's right, does that go off a folder? Yeah, it's a separate unit, that's a separate unit, it's like.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a phone, but.
Are the ATV something you feel is necessary to have or no?
Me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I think a little bit of use to get, the only, the only advantage would be as if. The ATV is out during a stormstorm and you went to see where they're at, I mean, that would be.
Sure.
Rare occasion, but normally in most situations, it's either sheriff's office or somebody that's using them at that point, or us.
Yeah.
Where it's been, I don't know, so they're not a high use vehicle, um. I don't know if you can justify the cost for them.
Yeah, let's do excluding ATVs, or, that's my best part of my motion.
Got enough room to write there?
Can I, can I repeat it just?
Yes.
Yeah.
See if you read it back to us.
Motion by Matt, second by Walter, to approve the installation of GPS units on all licensed county vehicles except sheriff's office and UTVs.
Okay, everyone understand the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Sure, roll call for that, or?
If you wanna request a roll call, we can, otherwise, we don't have to. You vote, you vote, at, at the end of the day, you still vote either way.
Right, right.
Would you like a roll call vote?
No, no, that's fine, I just didn't know if it, if it was necessary or not.
No, that's not.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, Phil.
Yep, thanks. Hey Doug, we're ready for you in the boardroom. Thanks. I think he went out.
Okay.
Morning.
Good morning, everyone.
We are up to planning and zoning administrator and from the discussions that we had during the budget, uh, with the, when you brought the minutes and everything in from twenty twelve or whatever time that was, I think it's worth a discussion, is that something you're wanting to get rid of those responsibilities, where we should separate that back out, or?
Can you catch me up here on? Um, so he's been serving on as the, um, zoning commissioner, president, administrator, um, and then.
It was during twenty twelve, wasn't it?
Yeah, I got the minutes right here, um. Okay. Where was it?
I don't remember if you were here for that or not, Carter.
Okay. I think I was just leaving.
Yeah, you might have been just leaving.
Okay, as interim planning and zoning administrator, allow three months for replacement.
Yeah, three hundred. Ten years ago.
Ten years ago, yeah.
Plus, so. Is that, is that something you feel we should separate those duties back off, or?
Well, it's boards, I think the intent was the board was going to attempt to, you know, there's zoning. They needed somebody to act. While they were looking in, that never happened, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Uh, there are conflicts that arise, subvention, review. I, I need to be zoning administrator and I need to be county engineer. But, uh, it's your guys' decision, I wanted you to make, I wanted to make you aware of that.
I guess.
Make previous boards aware of it as well.
Prior to that, what was that zoning administrator, was that a, a part-time position, or was that a?
Doug, do you recall what it was before?
Before you took over.
I, if, there was a full-time employee, Jack Bradley.
Okay.
Who had, I believe he was Jack, correct me if I'm wrong. Sanitarian, weed commissioner.
Yep.
Okay.
Had multiple roles.
Okay.
So that was included with a different position at the time?
Right.
Yeah.
So what, what is the start to the process? I mean, like, make a motion today to start, you know, looking, or?
Kind of the best I thought I decided. It's something you want, I mean, I, that's, I feel like it's been working great, and you do it, but it's something you wanna, it's something you wanna, you don't wanna continue doing.
There are, there are times where being the zoning administrator, uh, accusations you've made about roles that planning and zoning. Right, our, our zoning ordinance was created in nineteen seventy-three. Uh, which makes it difficult when technologies or land uses that probably were not thought of in nineteen seventy-three are brought up. Including wind energy, including hazardous liquid pipelines. And it creates where um, when I took the planning and zoning administrator position, I made clear I was not going to go out and find violations, planning and zoning. For example, zoning compliance permits. When people build structures in Kasut County. There are rules they have to follow, particularly setbacks. Very rarely, when I see construction out in Kasut County, are any communication of zoning ever, there, there's just none. I can, I can give you multiple examples, like homes that have been constructed.
Maybe, yeah, a couple of, I think, one guy is, somebody, something that would fall into either Luke's, Luke's role, or get to, uh, um.
Aaron.
Judy, Judy's role.
Oh.
Judy with Luke would be, be something that fit well with that, second thing is maybe, uh, Tammy could do a little questionnaire with other counties around, see what they're doing, their zoning administrators. Who's the way that word fits in, but off the top of my head, it just appears that could fall in well with place with Luke and Judy.
I do kind of wonder also if it would work with Aaron with his sanitary responsibilities, he's out and about in the county and weed commissioner, that does kind of make sense if that's how it was set up before.
As Doug said, the past, the previous guy was the, you know, sanitarian and weed commissioner, so.
I, I could.
Also, when he was hired, he had been zoning administrator in Webster County, so he did have some experience.
Yeah, which I'm sure that would help, but.
Either way, it sounds like, I mean, we're gonna find another person, they're gonna need training and stuff as well, so.
I'd, I'd see, I would be opposed to hiring some, hiring another employee, I just don't wanna do that. Yeah, just.
Yeah.
Well, I, I guess I'd like to see what Judy totally having like comes up with.
I can have eyesight to a survey.
Yeah.
To see how they.
See what other, what other kind of, you know, you come back to, stop, uh, head it, thinking something that Luke and Judy would be well qualified in. Then that falls into their category.
Okay, I will do that, I'll have them start last.
Can we put it back on the agenda for like two weeks then?
Sure.
Then we can get, get some more information, revisit it.
No decision made at this point. Well, it wasn't on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
It is.
If any would like to make, if anyone would like to make a motion.
Oh, I would say a discussion with her, that's, that's.
Yeah, I would say we're more information gathering phase, so, I guess.
That'd be good, we'll revisit it. So, what, you were asking if one of us would need to make a motion? We don't have to.
It's, it's available to, but we don't have to.
Oh, gotcha, okay, yeah.
In discussion, but no one does it.
Yep.
Yeah, so for the minutes, we can just write that discussion and further information will be gathered. And Doug, I would turn it over to you for gravel pit, ag land bids.
Yes, uh, the person who had our, uh, the, what we call the east cylinder gravel pit, there is a, uh, information in your electronic folder. Um, has retired, so, uh, we did advertise in the Palo Alto County, Hansburg reminder, I'm not sure what it's called. And then the Algonquin reminder, trying to get, uh, uh, people aware that County is offering this for bids. We did receive five, uh, bids from Shane Kogle, Tim Nagy, A.J. Osborne, Frank Ready, and Todd Schneider's. I don't think that any of them are present, uh, the advertisement is in the electronic folder. I'll go ahead and open the bids and review what we have here. First bid that I have is from Shane Kogle, uh, he bid a hundred and sixty-five dollars per acre. And his calculation then is two thousand five hundred ninety dollars and fifty cents for the total.
And that's for the year, correct?
That would be per year, the year. The next bid is from Tim Nagy. Tim bid ninety dollars per acre. That's one thousand four hundred thirteen dollars per year. The next bid is A.J. Osborne. Uh, he has a bid of eighty-five dollars per acre, would be one thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty cents. And Ready. His bid is one hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty cents, one five, one fifty per acre. A total of two thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. And the last bid is from Todd Schneider's. And Todd's bid was one hundred twenty dollars per acre, that's one thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars. So Shane Kogle submitted the high bid there, I would contact Shane and, uh, consult it with the board, I'll go in and have the county attorney prepare a farm lease for that, and we will bring that up to the board for approval.
We're doing the same, and they're, uh, like a three-year lease?
Yeah, three years, yes.
I, 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 without any, but.
Um, there's, I mean, it's the same contract that we have for all of our other ones, we have that situation. Uh, the tenant comes back to the board, um, or reassigns it to somebody.
But they're gonna treat them as, it's the other one, has the irrigation stuff, right?
Correct, yes.
Will that be on the same schedule then as the other ones?
Yes.
For three years or less?
In fact, we do have some, uh, leases that will be going out to tenants, uh, for them to sign and return.
Okay.
So they can be approved, so.
Next up is construction in the right of way, during your request?
There are no requests for construction right away today.
Okay, then discussion.
Um, county engineer, construction, the, uh, bridge down in Burbington that has been opened up for traffic, so, uh, people are using that. We still need to put the proper guard rail on that. When, now we have an obstacle, Josh, um. So, uh, we will. Once. Weather allows, we will put guardrail on, on the bridge. Uh, we still have an open position at the mechanic shop that we will be advertising for. Equipment, we have one motor grader that's still down. Uh, it happens to be clear up in the, its territory is up in the northwest corner. Uh. The mechanic from Ziegler is on vacation, otherwise that would probably be pretty close to being in operation. Once he gets passed out of the area. And that is really all that I have for the county engineer discussion. A zoning administrator. Um, we have rescheduled the public hearing for the CO2 pipeline. I did email that to the board, but that's February twenty-seven, uh, that's on Monday. Yes, Monday, February twenty-seven, and that's at, uh. Five o'clock in the afternoon. Uh, I have visited with, um, Tim Whipple, he is going to be, um. In attendance. And we're, notification has been sent to papers, it should be in all papers tomorrow. Thursday and then next week, Wednesday, Thursday, and also the Algonquin Reminder. Uh, court reporter. Tim suggested having a court reporter at this meeting. Uh, the planning and zoning budget does not have money to pay for a court reporter with the board. This board won't get a court reporter for this.
Do you have any idea on a price?
Well. I happen to know a court. And, um. It would probably be, uh. Somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty dollars per hour, plus if there's a transcript that needs to be ordered, three dollars and fifty cents a page. Would be an estimate.
Is there? Another. Secretary that takes tenants at that meeting?
Not, for, for word, the reason, uh, and. The reason Tim, Mr. Whipple has requested there be a court reporter, um, he has stated that. If this ordinance is passed, he is, he believes that it will go to federal court. Uh, summit will. Based on their past, will go to federal court this. Which is another situation. I don't know who pays for that.
So, um, or is it, is, is it gonna be held in here, is it, where it could be recorded?
It's in the board, it will be in the boardroom, yes, it will be recorded.
Could have sat, just be recorded.
So we could, we could potentially just use the owl.
Use the owls recorded.
If it goes to court, then we'll have to be transferred.
Just that case myself. That our budget probably then. Like, how long does that need to use their last?
It will depend on.
Depends on who shows up and how long they speak and how long they're allowed.
Two, three hundred dollars.
I, I would anticipate a couple hours for sure, so yeah, probably two to three hundred.
Well, I, I think that the pages of transcript will be more expensive than an hour degree.
That very well could be.
I will. It, it will be.
So in this case, it probably be. Well, advice to do that, then. That would, that would, yeah.
Well, well, we need to put that on the agenda for next week to approve. Hiring a court reporter for that.
Might, it might be worth it for the board supervisor, somebody to visit with Tim Whipple too, so you can. Instead of relying on me, relying on him.
I believe he mentioned that to me when I was on the phone with him.
And, and the other, the other thing I think that. It would be appropriate for the board, um. Mr. Whipple has again stated that if. Our supervisors passes the ordinance, it will be going to federal court, but. Uh, Mr. Whipple has indicated that I cap insurance. Will pay for this, his claim.
That was discussed down at, um, ISAC here this last week, and I, I will be checking into that because. Of the comments that were made there, I'll, I'll talk with our insurance agent on that. To verify, but that, that is how Shelby County presented it.
Okay. Just, I just want to make sure that I am indicating what I am understanding. Uh, there still needs to be, uh. Two. Two members of the Planning and Zoning Commission need to be appointed. And we need one person for the Board of Adjustment to be.
Can, can we put on the agenda next week, I did talk to Steve Stricker, he would like to be on the agenda next week to be appointed to the zoning committee.
I will put that on the agenda.
Okay.
Yes, and have a motion prepared.
Thank you, Jeff.
You bet.
Should we also have it on the agenda about a court reporter, or do you want us to visit with our attorney first? Or?
I, I think as long as we have that decision made by February twenty-seven. That would be appropriate, so February is a short month.
How much time do we need to notify someone or get someone?
I would all, though, I will visit with. Tentatively.
If they're available.
Sketch.
Okay. Do we want?
And I will also. Uh. Give some information on exactly what rates would be.
Do you want it on the fourteenth or the twenty-first?
Let's, let's discuss it again next week and then. You do a discussion through with the zoning administrator.
Yeah.
And.
And then make a decision.
If you feel you want to have, if you want to have a, a motion or whatever, but we'll have that decision made on the twenty-first.
Okay, do you want to write that down for the?
You're gonna do that?
I will take care of it.
If that was a.
Uh, is there anything else?
Uh, Kusut Waste Management Association, uh, we have had some trailers that are. Uh, doing preventive maintenance, that's up at North American Trailer up near Minnesota. Uh, the last trailer did have a little bit of a dent and a cross member that, uh. Needed some repair, it's going to be a, a little bit more expensive, but we really have not seen. An estimate on that yet. And then also the annual meeting of the Kusut Waste Management Association, that's March one, Wednesday, March one, twenty twenty-three, Jack here, the. Representative from the Board Supervisors.
So far as they know, it's.
Yes, so. Would you please put that in your calendar?
And that's at seven o'clock?
Yes. I should be.
I'll be there too. For the cities.
And Josh, I think you're the.
Alternate, yeah.
I did, I put the notice on your guys' desk, I think. Do you have to see that this morning?
Um, on top of everything else that was sitting here?
Well, I did it yesterday, so it must, it's pretty close to the top.
Yep, oh, there it is, I got it, I got it.
That's all that I have. That's all that I have.
Yeah. Anything further for Doug?
Good.
Thanks.
Very good.
Thank you, Doug.
Here.
Next item up, we have. Discussion, decision, approve funding the eyesight soil compaction project. This was talked about down at ISAC on. And say, that Wednesday, Thursday.
Uh, Thursday.
Thursday, when we were down in Des Moines. And it was, I had previously brought it to the board before the new year.
For the pipeline?
It's, it's in regards to the pipeline, but it's a, it's a study they are. Doing through Iowa State to come up with results on. How different levels of rainfall impact compaction and in different timeframes and. And it, it comes down to. That, the way it's been explained to me is basically they'd be able to give recommendations or suggestions as far as. Construction timeframes and. If you have a one-inch rain, you should stay off the soil for X number of hours before it's back in shape. To do as minimal damage as possible. And. It's tied in with the pipeline for the construction side of that. But ISAC was requesting six hundred dollars from each county as a voluntary contribution. Currently, they have about half the state, I think, I don't know if it was upper forties or fifties, whatever, that have participated. And I felt we should bring it up again, with all the money we're spending on attorney fees, I think it's. I think it's a no-brainer to spend a couple hundred on, uh, soil compaction project that. Impacts people whether, if the, if the projects go through, it will impact them whether they support it or not. And I feel it's our duty to look out for the, um. Long-term viability of the soil, considering our county's primarily agriculture land, and I think that's fairly important, so I think. Six hundred dollars is a very cheap investment for the information we could get back.
I remember it being discussed last year, I mean, I. I, I, I had questioned. Yeah, then, why? Approve. However many thousands of dollars, a hundred thousand dollars for an attorney fee, can do a soil compaction study for six hundred dollars, so I, I, I'd be. In favor of it.
Yeah, so I don't know if you guys have any questions, or if you heard the discussion at that point in time or whatever, but. I would, I would make a motion to approve funding the ISAC Soil Compaction Project. Six hundred dollars.
I would second.
So.
Any further discussion?
I guess, I mean, there's a lot of information, soil compaction, I, I mean, it's out there everywhere, what? Why, what? Why do we need to spend money on more information, soil compaction?
Yeah, but is that, the set information you got, is that specific to Kusut County and our agriculture land, or is that a broad? Something, cause they specifically. Well, this, this would provide specific for Kusut.
Iowa, Iowa State, it, it's not necessarily that it would provide specific for our county, cause I don't think they're gonna come up here and. Do a study on the soils after it has a one-inch rain here or every, every single location around the state, but. They will go on your different. Classes of soils, your different soil types, and that is general and very broad across the state, so that's easy to replicate. Um, Iowa State is.
Seen for many, many years, but every seed company has soil, has soil compaction information, they dig down, they do rut. You know, rut testing.
This isn't. Probably not quite comparable to that, um. It's not about. Well, in the end, it impacts how well crops would grow, but this is more specific to come up with guidelines on construction recommendations. It's not just. How deep of a rut are you gonna leave if you drive across a field after it rains, it.
And also for. Damages that. Can happen, you have, you have evidence of what the soil was like before versus what it was like after, more than just. You know, the landowner saying, well, this changed, you have, you have more concrete. Evidence there.
I think, I think it's. Throwing money on top of other research, it's already been done and it's ongoing, I don't know why we need to spend tax. Taxpayers dollars on, on something that's bad.
Are, are you gonna compile, go through all that data and come up with recommendations for inordinants? Or for policy suggestions in that regard from data that's been done over the last twenty-plus years?
Power rep. This policy regulations for what?
As far as if we get a one-inch rain, how many hours they need to stay off that ground before they can resume construction.
Yes, what are landowners' thoughts on?
It, it would be, it would be a protection in that regard, if we can get information and policy suggestions that. If there's a three-inch rain, maybe they can't do construction for a week, or whatever that magic number is, but it's based on. Facts and data rather than pulling a number out of a hat. And it's. Land Grant University in the state, I mean, I don't.
I still think there's. I don't think it's a wise use of taxpayer money, there's plenty of data out there, if you get a three-inch rain, they're not gonna go out there and walk around the block, they're gonna.
Yeah, they will.
So.
That's, that's been a primary concern from individuals who have been in this boardroom. About how the construction for the Dakota Access Pipeline destroyed the land out there. I, I. I think six hundred dollars, considering all we're spending on attorney fees. I, I think it's a no-brainer. We could save one hour on the attorney and pretty much transition that into. The, our portion of the study from Iowa State.
Just put your dad out there, and soil compaction. That's me.
Um. We have a motion and a second on the floor, can you do a roll call vote on this?
That's.
No.
Nat?
Yes.
Black shirt?
Yes.
Second.
Yes. Motion carries three to one. We are up to discussion with our auditor.
I've asked Will and Ron to come in this morning because we have some, a problem with the furnace that.
Within the building, your furnace, your furnace went to get down there.
At the, um, real emergency management building. So apparently it's not working at all, correct?
No, we can't, it's got a little. We have shut it off, he turns on, just can't put the car, you cannot.
Be alive.
There was no way to. So we make that price, that's with the crane and everything, set it on there, that's with me and Ron helping.
I'm guessing you just got one price alone, only.
So far, that's, that's who we work with, I mean, there, we're gonna be able to help him, I don't know how many other plumbing companies are gonna allow us to help, so. That keeps the labor down. As of right now, that's thirty to forty-five days, he can continue looking, see if we can find one, but.
He doesn't even have it on hand.
No.
Or?
Look, I'm on, took us to sixteen across the street.
Speaking of, I think we're done, so.
Back, they're in.
They're in.
Trying to work all the issues out right now.
They've got it for you.
Yeah.
All of them or just a handful?
No, no, they're all.
They're all.
The controls are pretty much all done, they're still, uh, working on the balancing. Trying to finish that up before we can really start calling it fit with the engineers and stuff.
Electricians are up there today trying to hook up, uh.
Good.
Smoke detectors, happy to come with them, so I was gonna call in, but. Training again, want to know where the rest of that's at. And what do, what?
Well, we wouldn't be able to approve it today, we'd have, cause it's not on the agenda, but we'd be able to. Put it on the agenda for next week for approval and discuss that at that time, but.
Like, uh. The budget for that building or?
That's in our budget.
Our budget.
That whole building's in our budget.
Super, so I'd have to look and see where we're at with that.
Like, article funds or things like that.
How much is that?
Fifteen.
There's.
So, barely.
So, I would want to do one of them for that.
Well, it's gotta be replaced soon, quick, though.
I think there's probably money in your guys' fund for that building, but I have to double check it.
I guess, I, I would just, for consistency, I would like to see another price, even if. Even if. Not.
Somebody, that's fine.
You want me to do that, or you guys? Do?
I don't know who you want to go, you can go to wherever you'd like, I don't, I'm just saying, we went to him, cause that's who we worked with and he'll allow us to help. So, that's up to you, you want to do another price? I don't have any hard feelings towards. I don't have any hard feelings towards.
We can get another price. I mean, Al One Plumbing does a good job.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not saying they don't, but I think doing our due diligence is better to look at.
Sure, I'm, yeah, this is your building. I'm just letting you know that I can't turn that furnace back on.
That is a problem, so.
Well, maybe put it on the agenda for next week to, yeah. Discuss, prove, uh, purchase of the furnace. And if we have other bids by then, great. If we don't, then we'll move forward from there.
With the, we got these specs, you know.
Yeah, somewhere you get, you have to go.
Exactly.
I mean, you can give me a picture. We got, we took a picture of the nameplate and get the specs off that.
And just go ahead and get a price.
Correct, correct.
Hey, fair.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, a rooftop is pretty, it's not, I won't say standard, but it is. I mean, you gotta have a roof curb made for whatever brand you're getting to adapt over to the roof curb that's there. I mean, but other than that, you got seven and a half tons of AC and one hundred, two hundred thousand BTUs of heat, so.
Two hundred and forty thousand BTU. Is that, is that the same size we currently have in there?
So, then there's two hundred thousand BTUs on I and seven and a half ton there.
Okay, so this would go to two forty, okay?
I'm assuming it's two stage. I don't say that, but I.
Doesn't, yeah, it doesn't say that.
Yes, most of them anymore, I find it's a fire.
Yes.
Also, I gotta work for that meeting down there. That, we have that thing there over here.
There.
You can't have the meeting without.
Which, which mean?
They, that there's a way to heat it.
Yeah, he cranks up the.
Oh, yeah.
Because there's another.
She cranks up the, turns the ceiling fans on. It, I mean, there's, there's a furnace on the north end, there's a furnace for the office. She cranked both up and then when the meeting starts turning down or leave the one on the north turned up and one that's right by the office is turning down. It's, I mean, it's, there's gonna be some planning, yes, but.
Yeah. Well, anything else on this or just the agenda item and stuff?
Yeah.
I almost had any questions, but what else is going on?
So I'll put it on the agenda for next week. Okay. And if you guys have been following Senate File One Eighty-One, um, that talks about the valuations.
Do you want the vision of the nameplate?
Sure.
You can get the nameplate, the spec code, I'll just send it to you.
That'd be awesome. Thanks.
You watch, I watched it, um, on the House yesterday. It will be moved to the House floor tomorrow. Um, I'm expecting it to advance out of the, the house. Uh, if it is approved, we have fifteen days from the passing of the bill to redo all of our valuations and our tips. If it passes as it stands right now, they're extending the deadline for budgets to April thirtieth instead of March thirty-first to give all counties and cities time to redo their valuations. So, um, if it doesn't pass, then our budgets go through as, as we are right now. So we're kind of in a holding pattern, um, until we find out where that, what happens with the bill. Um, today, well, there's, in Thursday's paper will be notification of our special election on March seventh for North Union and North Cassuit Schools. So that will be in Thursday's papers. On February twentieth, our office by state law is required to be open. That is a holiday for the county, so courthouse and our offices will be closed. So we will be putting on the radio that our office will be open on the twentieth for some tea voting, uh, day. So that will be advised. We will also make notice put on the doors of that also. Even though the other offices in the courthouse will be. Next week. Summit Carbon Solutions is asking to do a project update. So Stephen Frott will be here that day along with Kaylee Langrow and Doug Burgold to do that project update. And that is all I have on the agenda for next week. Except for the normal usual weekly business. And I think that's all I have.
Sounds good. Board discussion and committee reports. Jack, do you have anything? Carter?
I don't really.
Josh?
Well, we went to the ISAC, um, supervisors meeting and got a lot of good information and, and, uh, able to talk to some different vendors and things like that that were down there. Um, primarily just kind of went over and gave our input on some of the house files and senate files that are up. That was well received. Um, just a lot of, a lot of good information from down there on different things going on. Um, Shelby County did present on how things are going with their ordinance and, and their process that they're in right now in federal court, things like that. Uh, what else? It was a long day. A lot of information.
That's for sure. Anything else? Yours or?
Nope.
Good. Um, yeah, I was also at the statewide supervisors day with ISAC last Thursday. Um, there was quite a bit of information, a lot of, a lot of good discussion. The insurance piece with the CO2 project is one thing I definitely need to check in on. Um, going forward, we've got the meeting for EMA tomorrow. Conference board for Judy on Thursday. Um, and I will have the legislative conference coming up here. I'll be leaving Friday. We'll be back Wednesday, so. Um, for the, for other discussion, Jack and Carter, you guys would have, which Carter would have been here for some of the stuff on last Tuesday, but after you had left, we went through the engineers budget. And I have a list of several things to go over, but I'm fairly concerned about that one and the taxes that were requested, so. I don't, don't know if you've had any time to review that, Jack, or not, but there's. Yeah, I'm, I'm sure. But just to bring that to attention, I, I think there's some things we'll need to look back over.
I looked over the feeds.
Yeah.
Budget workshops after this.
Yeah. Well, any other business to come before the board here? If not, I will adjourn the meeting at nine eighteen. Not yet, no.